Good evening. I would like to call the Wednesday, August 9th RTCC meeting to order. Our first order of business, welcomes and introductions. Look to you, Nika, to kick us off.
Okay, great. Thank you. Are there folks there too?
Only Lance.
Oh, hello Lance. Okay, so my name is Nika Oaks and I am the new director of RTCC. And it would be incredibly helpful to have all of your names again, now that I'm not as nervous.
Sam Hooper, resident of Brookfield, work down here in Randolph.
I'm Ashley Lincoln. I work in Randolph Center. I live in Randolph Center and I work at Gifford.
I'm Sarah Hott and I'm a representative for Randolph.
Nathan Wright, I live here right in Randolph and I work for the Radio Vermont Group.
Thank you.
All right, are there any petitions to come before the board? Hearing none, we will move, I think go directly to you, Nika, again for the staffing update.
Thank you. So I wanted to let everybody know that staffing is going, as I can see it, really well. At RTCC, we had several openings and in the last three weeks, we've been able to fill or be in process to filling several positions. And currently, the only position that I do not have at least a viable candidate for is the paraprofessional position in the Special Education Department. So I'm very excited about all of the new people that have come on board. We've got a really nice group.
Will you just go over the programs that will have new teacher leaders this year?
Yes. So some of these people, like I said, are still in process and have not been fully hired yet. But we have, you want me to say names?
Just say the name of the program.
The name of the program. Automotive, Diesel, Health Careers. What else am I missing?
PreTech.
Thank you, PreTech. We also have a new curriculum coordinator, a new school counselor, and two teachers aides that'll work throughout the building. And I think that's...
New math and new...
Oh my gosh, right. That was a while ago.
There's additional staff. There's a lot of additional staff.
Thank you. Yes, that was a couple of months ago and I thank you. I completely forgot. Yes, so we have one new math teacher and two new English teachers. So thank you for that.
So we will have two math classes, two English classes, but our math teacher from last year is staying. So just one of them, you need to clarify.
So we basically cut the teacher to student ratio in those two fields.
We had talked, because you're actually doing really well, so... But we had talked in previous times about the fact that one of the pieces where the state is taking a look at the CTE centers is kind of basic skills for students, you know, making sure that they've got this foundational knowledge in those areas. And it's weak across the state. It's been weak here. And so they are recommending increasing the number of core discipline teachers that we have, which is the purpose. So in the old days, when we just had the one math and the one ELA teacher, right, if you've got 143 students there, they've got that full workload themselves. And that's not going to be an effective way for them to be able to connect and communicate.
Cool.
So yeah, you hit it exactly on the head. They cut the student to teacher ratio in half and hopefully it's going to give us a really good impact.
And our curriculum coordinator is going to be working very specifically with looking at each student's levels and deciding, instead of just them being in the overall math class or the overall ELA class, they'll be looking more at, are they need a more advanced curriculum or do they need to learn some basics? And that will give sort of a range of opportunities for students to move throughout that as they grow and change, and also to have teaching that is appropriate to where they are at their level.
I would say you can just keep on moving way through.
Just keep moving?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay. Robin, the piece about current enrollment, do you have the card?
Yes, I can pull that up real quick.
Thank you.
Sorry, current enrollment, overall, yes.
Okay, so yes, our current enrollment is 160 students right now. Thank you for that.
Do you want it broken down by each program or just go to the 160?
Do you want it broken down by each program?
I'm okay.
Is there any program of concern that doesn't have enough filled that we should be looking at?
Not at this time.
Are you full?
Not at this time.
How many spots are open?
Like altogether, we'd have to count all those.
Oh, okay.
I mean, if we just look briefly, auto is full. Auto's full.
Auto, ag, and video are full?
Auto's full.
Just kidding.
Auto's full. Construction currently has six students. Criminal justice has nine. Culinary has 11. Dental has seven. Diesel has 13. Digital film has 19. Diversified has 17. Education services has seven. Electrical has 10. Health careers has nine. Manufacturing and fabrication has 14. And pre-tech morning class has 11 in it and pre-tech afternoon class has 12. So programs can have 16, sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry for speaking correctly. So that's what I'm curious, like what's your overall cap? 16. Right, so I just didn't count all those programs. So how many students can you have in total in your facility?
What's the difference between what's...
Count up your number of programs, multiply by 16.
16 times 12. Yes, so there's 12 programs? That's why I just didn't know. Okay, thank you. Then I can do the math myself. Yeah, but then you could feasibly have another 32 on half-day program in pre-tech, feasibly. But so those would, pre-tech, they count as half? Thank you, that's what I was saying.
192 students if every program had 16.
Okay.
And then pre-tech would be 12 in the morning, 12 in the afternoon.
And you say we're currently at 160?
Yes.
Historically, of course COVID was a little bit weird, you know, going way back, you know, 130, 135 were good years. We had a couple of years that were like 143. So, you know, 160 is a healthy compared to what we've had in the past. Typically, we start out a little bit higher. It'll drop a little bit, you know, if it's in the 155, 157 range, that's a really, really good year for us.
I'm wondering, are you going to be accepting any more students or is that just the number that you're starting off with beginning of the school year? Are there any...
More students come between now and then, sure. Okay, thank you.
No, I agree with you.
We're just trying to be protective. You're awesome.
Let's see. Any other questions about enrollment? The next thing that I wanted to talk to you about in that packet that I gave you all, unfortunately, it's not in the, it's not the first thing. So we have to go to the last item. The RTCC cellphone expectations. So new this year, we have purchased these clear boxes. They're about 11 and a half by 10 boxes and they have locks on them. And so they're like a bike lock, like the kind that you do with your thumb. And so they're clear, so you can see through them, but when students come into the room, we're going to ask everyone to put their phones into the box and then the teacher will close the lid. They will be locked, leave it on the desk so students can see their phones, because sometimes students get anxious if they can't see where their phone is. But it stays there during the learning time and during class time. They get their phone back when they change classes, so when they're in the halls, walking to another class or when they're at lunch. But the classrooms are treated just like any work situation where your phones are away and quiet. So that is new this year. So I'm just going to read the cellphone expectations here. "All students are required, per RTCC School Expectations, to place their phones in the clear locked box provided by their classroom teacher. Students may access their phones during lunch and passing times only. Noncompliance with this expectation is a Level 2 violation on the RTCC rubric titled 'Refusal to Follow Phone Expectations.' Any student who violates this expectation will receive the coinciding consequence on the progressive discipline rubric." And I'll go over the rubric with you in just a moment. But I would like your feedback on that and I'm wondering how you feel.
I applaud you for this. It's bold. I agree 100% with what you're doing. My only concern would be, are you ready to set parent expectations? And make sure we're ahead of it, that they know. You're not going to text your kid during the day and he's not going to, or she's not going to respond.
Right.
Right, so...
Not till passing time for lunch.
I agree with this 100% because I think even in the real world and the workforce, this is a big issue that I've seen a lot with businesses in Vermont and throughout the country that I deal with. And it's setting good expectations and focus for the students. I just want to make sure we're ahead of the curve with the expectation of the parents that are sending their kids.
Well, that's a really good point. And to that point, I did send a letter to parents and I outlined the expectation and I talked about the box. Hopefully, it's understood by parents, but it was in the letter.
Perfect.
And it will be in other things as well.
And what the reasoning that I hear a lot is, well, if there's an emergency, I need to get hold of my kid, blah, 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 blah. So do you have those procedures in place where if there's an emergency, it's clearly lined out how the parent can get hold of the student and that?
I think we're going to have to go old-fashioned on them and say, call the school and we'll find your student. We know where your children are.
Good. I just want to make sure that's very clear.
Thank you.
We've told them in the past as well, but a lot of times, they still just reach them by phone. We've struggled in the last year with kids just texting their parent and say, I'm sick, I want to come home. And the parent calls and says, my kid isn't feeling well. They're going home. Well, have they gone to the nurse? Because protocol in the school is they go to the nurse first.
Right, follow protocol.
So they need to see the nurse before they're permitted to go home. So like we've had to have that conversation with parents several times.
And I think this policy also brings up what Ashley brought up in the last meeting is more accountability. Being held more accountable, not only students, but parents that send their children to the center. So I really think that this is a great step in the right direction personally.
Thank you. I appreciate that feedback. And I'd like to, we're not taking it away all day. They can check in between classes and see if there was some sort of family emergency that could only be said through a text message. They'll see it. And then, you know, should they have an emergency, of course...
And it's in a clear box. It's in their reach. It's just not accessible. And I think that's a great compromise to make sure nothing's going to happen.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would say I fully support that. I think that's great. Just be prepared for when you get one parent who's ready to rock and roll. We've seen this exact topic hit national headlines in Florida, DC, and Philadelphia. So it won't, it's not like no one's pushing back against it. So just have those ducks in a row, I think. And I don't know what the emergency procedure is, if there was a lockdown or a shooter on the premises.
We probably wouldn't have time to distribute the phones. But the thing is about the phones is parents aren't supposed to be calling students' phones anyways because it interferes with the police and everything, being able to communicate with the school and it causes chaos. The parents show up where there shouldn't be parents in the middle of a situation. So it actually would help in an actual lockdown emergency.
And in an emergency, the first priority is the children's safety, right?
Absolutely.
Not if they can get hold of their parents.
Right.
So make sure they're in a safe spot and that, you know...
Exactly.
Keeps them, keeps the people in the classrooms or wherever they are hiding aware of what's going on around them. Right, if you're on the phone, you're less aware. But it also, usually when the shooters are walking through the hallways, they're in a little bit of a heightened state. They're not quite rational. They are drawn to noises. And so if people are chattering on the cellphones or the cellphones are clicking and beeping, then that's going to attract attention. So yeah, it's good. It's probably even better that they're out of their hands.
I think this is great. I wish this was in place a long time ago. I think it's fantastic. My question though is, are your colleagues in the field and their adherence to this consistently in the classrooms?
That is my expectation and that will be followed up with by me if the teacher decides that they're not supportive of this, but I don't see that being a problem.
That's great.
Thank you.
I have a question. Sometimes students will go out in the field. So wondering, are the cellphones going to be left in the classroom when they're going on...
I imagine that they're going to take the box with them.
Okay. Great.
So it's totally portable, not too heavy?
It's very small.
Okay.
Yeah, it's this big.
It's called a first aid box.
Yeah, it's as big as my computer. So I think there's no reason why the box is going to go with them.
Great.
I think it even has a handle, if I remember correctly.
You bring up a good point. Does that include smartphones, smart watches? Because you can access your phone through your watch without it actually being on you.
It needs to include that. Thank you.
So we got to make sure that this policy includes any smart devices that are connected to the phone.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Yep.
I had not thought of that.
I get a lot of hate email for bringing that up, your watch.
I will put that up with you.
But it's nice to share. It's nice to share.
You made a good point. I hadn't thought of it.
I don't have kids or anything, right? I mean, I know how that works. So yeah, I would put smart watches or any connected devices to your accounts on your phones. Also go on that block. And it sounds big enough to hold watches.
Thank you for bringing that up. Yeah, and the other choice is they can leave it at home or in their car.
They sure can. Yes. Okay, perfect.
Good job.
Thank you. Okay, so from there, the attendance policy or expectations, not policy.
That is the page before the last page. All right, so I hope this makes sense and is really clear, but let me know if you find it confusing. So I began with this, I began this whole process with the unexcused absences because I believe those to be the biggest problem. You can have 18 absences unexcused before you are no longer a student at RTCC. But there are many stopgaps before that so that we can hopefully mitigate this from happening. So at three unexcused absences, we will make a phone call home and send an official letter saying that your student has now had three absences unexcused. At five unexcused absences, they'll have a meeting with their school counselor to see if maybe there's a reason why they've been absent so much. A phone call home and again, a letter sent to document that they're now at five. At eight unexcused absences, they will no longer be eligible for the National Honor Society or eligible for work-based learning going on on co-ops. Of course, we'll call home and send another letter to document. At 12 unexcused absences, they will meet with the entire team, all of the people that work with them. So myself, the school counselor, if they have a 504 or an IEP, that would be Kristy Arguin, their program teacher, and anyone else that may work with them, such as their math or ELA teacher or a paraprofessional that works with them that we may invite, their family, and the student. Then we would send notification to the sending school. Of course, we'd make the phone call home because that's how we're getting everyone here and then send a letter home. At 17 unexcused absences, we're meeting with the entire team, sending notification to the sending school and a letter sent home. And that is the last stopgap before the 18 unexcused absences, which would result in excusal from RTCC and loss of all credit. They wouldn't be eligible for recognition night and sending schools would be notified and the final meeting would happen with administration before being requested to return to their homeschool. I think that this is a very forgiving amount of unexcused absences.
I think it's too much.
I kind of do too.
And can I just interrupt real quick?
Go ahead.
There's certain classes that have a waiting list or people that didn't make it in. This is a long time to figure out someone doesn't want to be there or another kid could really benefit from the program.
It is a long time.
Is this a state mandate or is this our own mandate that we set?
The previous, last year, we allowed 22 unexcused absences. So this is a cut from that and it is the maximum, I believe, Lynn, when we looked it up, the maximum allowed by the state of Vermont.
So the, with the state of Vermont, what it says is that students can't miss more than 10% of the total number of days, either in high school or at RTCC, to actually have it count as them earning credit for a year. And so the 18 is about that 10% mark that's here. It certainly can be more restrictive than that. There was a discussion a little bit in terms of the idea that here we are, you know, we're trying to prepare students for the next stage of their lives. This is the, students, a lot of them will be going out into the workforce. What does the workforce expect? And shouldn't we be setting, you know, standards and expectations that coincide with what the workforce is going to expect of them?
I don't know a workforce...
Nika's been doing a good job of that.
That would allow 18 unexpected absences and still be employed. I don't know. I mean, you're shaking your head no to actually, so...
It's usually 10 in private, right?
Why not unexcused absences?
Three strikes, you're out kind of thing. I mean...
I'm talking about total absences. Yeah, usually you get 10 sick days.
I mean, things happen, you know, but if you're a regular absentee, like... For me, RTC is getting kids ready for the workforce, right? It's going out, you're going to be in a trade, you're expected to be there, work's being booked with the expectation, accidents happen, people get sick, we get that. But, you know, 18 unexcused absences is a loss of revenue for our company. So my question is, and 18 absences is a long time to figure out that the kid doesn't want to be there. Or, you know, so is it like we go down to eight and then we start contacting the school? Hey, Williamstown, South Royalton, Rochester, wherever. We've already got eight unexcused absences in the first month or in the first two months. We, this is a waiting list to get into this class.
I would like to contribute that I think that every time a letter is sent home, the sending school should be notified.
I think that's fair.
I mean...
Documentation.
Yeah, documentation. And it will also give the sending school the sense that they're being included in the problem.
Well, you know the stigma of tech schools, right?
Yep.
For years. We're trying to break that stigma. This isn't a place you send kids that don't want to learn. Like we want to, there's a different type of learning and we want to build that culture and foster that interest, but at the same time, we don't want, we're not here to send troubled or uninterested kids into trade just for a place to go, right? This isn't a place for kids to go. This is, this is a place to grow in a trade and become valuable outside of school. So are we setting that expectations with the schools that send their kids here that we're treading the reins because we're really focusing on what's beneficial for the students that are here?
I'd like to respond to you because I, I'm going to be very honest and say that my first draft of this had 10 absences, like you're saying. And in a conversation with my husband, who is an educator, I said, do you think 10 absences is too little for, for being excused from school and not being allowed to come back? And he thought about it and he said, I do because we have a mental health crisis going on with kids. And there are kids who may feel like, like they're, they could be being bullied or they could be very depressed. Or maybe they have a parent that they rely on to get them to school and that parent is unable to get up in the morning and get them to school. In those cases, if that was the situation, 10 absences could happen very, very quickly and we may not fully understand the difficulty that that student is facing until it gets to a greater extent. And being a licensed school counselor myself, that really appealed to me because I know that there are people that are struggling with things like that. And so I then wanted to extend it.
Is that a valid or a medical excuse though and not unexcused?
I was just going to say that would be...
Only with a doctor's note. Only with a doctor's note.
So again, and I, and I understand...
I'm not saying it's wrong. I'm just saying...
And, and my compassion side's like, oh God, I feel for those kids.
Me too.
But taking my compassion and my personal feelings to the side, what do we want to set for expectations of RTCC? We don't want to not support those kids. But after 10 absences, that, you know, I think after eight, you got to look at a pattern and be like, okay, what's going on? And then start your investigation, right? Like really get mental health professionals to come in somehow or have that connection or really start talking to the student and be like, what's going on? Are you having a hard time getting to school because of transportation? If you don't have to get into family, like what is your obstacle sooner? Because then we can maybe come up with a plan, like do you need a bus route? Do you need a ride? Do you know, be more progressive earlier on how to help the child instead of waiting till 12 or 17 because they're already suffering for... And they're already so far behind in the class. I mean, they're really far behind after five. And we're talking unexcused, like not doctor's appointments or having mono or getting COVID or anything like that. We're talking unexcused. After five, they're probably, they're already a week behind class time. Like should we jump on it sooner?
Like a bigger meeting?
Sooner, like at eight. Like do we do the...
Well, at five, we have a meeting with the school counselor and that is the point of it is to find out what is going on.
Do we bring in the parents at that time as well?
At five, we certainly could.
Be like, hey, we're just concerned. Here's our expectations. Here's what we're trying to help your child, like set goals and expectations, right? Like we want your child to graduate and be ready for the real world and get out there and be successful. We've already got five unexcused. We just want to open a conversation and just move it down. That's my thought. It's just be more proactive. I don't know what everybody else...
I'm curious about other thoughts and I thank you for all of that.
Yeah, no problem.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Oh, I agree. I also think we should take into consideration that they are still all children.
100%.
So I think yes, 18 is a lot, but we have to think about, you know, it could be on the parent's end as well and not holding the student 100% accountable for something that may be going on at home because they are still children.
Yeah, that was my like real concern, just if they get a ride to school and their parent is not able to drive them for whatever reason and then they get moved from here.
There's every little thing that's not so cookie cutter, right?
Yeah.
Oh, my, my mom's car died and we can't get here. But being that we have that conversation at five, okay, can we help in some way? More of like a proactive concern, check-in, help.
But this gives the opportunity for the administration to approve an absence, like that's based on neglect or homelessness.
That's true.
Yes, towards the bottom. Toward the bottom. So excused would not count on this rubric. Is that correct?
Excused, right.
Does not count on the rubric. Excused absence. No, it doesn't count. No, we just haven't made it down to the, I haven't gotten past the...
So it's just the unexcused.
And if you didn't meet the definition of what's excusable, then this is the category.
Right.
Maybe I should continue with the parts below it, just so maybe that'll explain a little bit more. So at the asterix there, it's two unexcused tardies and or early dismissals will equal one excuse, unexcused absence. And then we have here attendance along with other professional skills will be assessed in every program and will impact rates. Both excused and unexcused absences impact credit attainment. Please be present on time and attentive. Examples of excused absences from RTCC would include a medical or other required appointment with an official note required, a religious holiday, a court date, bereavement, or other reasonable absences as approved by the administration. So my car broke down on the way to school and we needed to wait for AAA would be one of those reasonable absences approved by administration.
Quick question.
Yes.
What is considered a tardy? Is coming in at 2:00 in the afternoon and getting out at 2:20, is that a tardy? Or is that a full day of missing?
So that's, that's skipping a whole bunch of classes. So that you've missed the day.
But is that tardy 9:00 in the morning when class starts at 8:30?
We haven't gotten that far in discussing, but I would say no later than five minutes past the start of class. Something around that, but I do need to discuss that further.
Perfect.
I mean, some of our teachers in the past would take attendance right at 9:00 because that is when class started. And so anybody who came in after 9:00 in those programs was marked tardy because that is how that teacher felt. Other teachers wouldn't take their attendance until 9:15. So Linda and I would see people come by at 9:05, 9:10 and we would write them down as tardy. But then when the attendance was taken and it came up, when the teacher took attendance, they were in the classroom. So they weren't marked tardy.
So does that need to be a policy?
Right, yes, we will have a specific time that will be, that attendance must be taken by this time.
Okay, I think that's...
Vermont defines that a minimum of four-hour day to count as a day.
Four hours.
Four hours. Like if you try to have a half-day, you need to have four hours.
Okay.
There's also language in there for a minimum per week, but let's just stick with that. Like as rate.
Do you have to eat lunch as well?
No, they, they usually just call that. You can, I would say, you know, if they're not here, probably by 11:00. That's, that's a full time. a full day. You come in. But, but then the problem that you get in doing that is if the kid comes in at eleven-thirty and is getting docked for the entire day, they're going to say, screw it, why do I come in at all?
Hmm.
So there's that, that balance point. Yeah, so.
If the kid comes out at eleven-thirty, it could be more of a distraction to the classroom than if he doesn't come in for the whole day and disrupt the other students. That's a hard.
Yeah, but it's, it's kind of funny because the rules, rules can dictate what behaviors you can expect. So if a student knows that if they come in after eleven-thirty, they're not going to get credit for any part of the day, then the majority of them are going to say, then why bother coming in at all?
And that's even if it's excused?
Uh, no, not excused, they're a different ballgame.
Okay, just on excuse.
Turn, turning from tardy, you know, at the, at what point in time does a tardy turn into basically being considered a full day?
A full day, okay. Yeah.
And will you check to see if taking away work-based learning is allowable under Act one-seventy-seven, which gives students access to flexible pathways for learning? Like, is it allowable to take that away?
Okay.
I'm not sure if, I, I don't know. So I'm asking-
One-seventy-seven?
Act one-seventy-seven, it's like flexible pathways, multiple pathways to learning. It's a whole big Vermont act.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Sam, did you?
Yeah. Uh, this is in draft form, right?
Yep.
This is in public, okay. I guess in my hearing of the different concerns in the room, I like kind of the left half of it with maybe a little bit more engagement with parent and counselor involvement earlier on.
Okay.
Um, I think the twelve, seventeen, eighteen, if you were to shave each of those by two, I think you'd get into a, I think it would be more appropriate.
Twelve, sixteen?
Yeah, so it'd be sixteen, fifteen, and ten.
So you run, you run a business, if somebody is chronically absent, at what point in time are you going to tell them?
Right, so that's, that's the, yeah, that's the big question. I, I-
You're talking unexcused.
Yeah, unexcused, for me, would be, depending on the value of the employee, would be six or eight. Um, you know, people have their stuff, but obviously the pandemic has upended a lot of that and created a lot of wiggle room. So I guess I'm in favor of being more rigorous on the latter half, maybe shave it by three. But I also recognize this mental health issue. I recognize the inequities in enrollment and, you know, family dynamics. If one person, well, and then you get into excused absences, and if somebody can call AAA each time or figure that, figure out how to game that system, then that's a whole nother thing. So I, I think getting a little bit more rigorous on the second half of it would be good, and a little bit more involvement on the front half, to Nathan's point about waiting lists and just people's eagerness to, to be in the learning environment.
Thank you.
It might not be a bad thing either, but it just might be that automotive wasn't, it's not their thing. They're not engaging, they don't want to come to the class. Okay, so is that, is that an issue? Is that like, it's not what I thought it was? Okay, well, let's get, let's get ahead of it.
Yeah, but there's a, there's a good reason, you know, in the way that this was modeled for the check-ins that, that they developed, and that's so that you weed that stuff out, you know? Is, is, is the kid getting bullied not telling anybody? Is that why they're not showing up? Is that, you know, is that why we've got unexcused absences? Are they not engaged in the program? Do they have something horrible going on in the home life that nobody knows about and nobody's helping them with? You know, those are the things that can get revealed when those conversations happen with the students, you know, if they're, they're approached in a, in a good way, which I know they won't be.
So I think we've had some really great conversation, and I, my two cents on this is I think the max should be ten-
Okay.
-as unexcused, in that, again, these groups, these classes are very small and intimate in size with sixteen students. So I'm going to assume that there is going to be a real quick understanding from those teachers as to the, the students that they're with, and the involvement could happen much earlier on with that student if they foresee an issue. I think you've done a nice job rounding out your program with having more resources within the technical center, where there's going to be people who can quickly react if there is an issue. In my opinion, if you put this in front of a student and they see eighteen, they're going to go to seventeen.
Mm-hmm.
And I think that that is only setting, not only the program up for failure, it's the other classmates who are showing up and are engaged and are trying to actively receive an education that's going to set them up, because I'm not scared until I hit eighteen.
Lynn said the exact same thing to me this morning.
I mean, we have had students in the past who have been like, oh, okay, so I'm only at fourteen absences, so I've got, like, six or eight more that I can go. I've got plenty of time, like, I'm not even worried about this.
I think that's a culture of people coming into the workforce. How much ETO do I have? Oh, I can do, okay, I got two hours? Okay, I'm not there yet to the right up. Okay.
I, I think you've been given, really, this is a gift, in that you get to start with a clean slate on, at the end of this month, when you welcome students into the technical center, and you're setting the stage, like, these are the expectations moving forward, and have that very clearly documented like you have done, but I think it needs to be stricter.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I also encourage talking to the teachers and getting feedback, too.
That will happen.
Um, because I think a lot of people are like, man, ten? I'm ready to jump out my window by the time I hit ten, you know, like, really get, because you want your employees happy, too, right? You want to find that balance where you don't want to have turnover in staff, so, you know, get feedback from them, too, and just kind of see where they're at.
That will absolutely happen. I definitely wanted to hear your opinions first before, you know, to present my best version.
Yeah, perfect.
Thank you. Did you want to add anything?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for all your feedback. Okay, now, with that being said, here is our proposed behavior rubric. So with this rubric, the point of it, for me, as the person that will be handling the discipline in the school, is to have a very clear way to discipline students without having any bias or any unexpected consequences for the student. This will be given once complete and, and perfected to families, it will be present within the school, teachers will have it, and students will have it. They will be able to identify the action that they did and locate the consequence that's associated with their action without me having to give them the consequence. They will be able to identify it. So for an example, level-one behaviors, I gave some examples so that people can kind of understand what does a level-one behavior look like. Being inappropriately dressed for a program, like coming in with sandals when you know you need steel-toe shoes, something like that. Being late for class or having inappropriate interactions with other people within the class or interrupting the learning process, like someone who just keeps yelling out, you know, those basic things that you see in a classroom that, that disrupt. So the first offense is just going to be a conversation and processing with the present adult, whether that adult is the classroom teacher, or it could be the counselor who's coming to do some SCL, it could be that the teacher was absent and it's a sub, whoever that is is going to have a conversation and process with that person. And it's their first offense, so it's not getting documented, it's just a conversation. If it happens again, they will create an incident report made by the person who witnessed the event and then have a conversation with me. If it happens a third time, they will create an event, an incident report made by the person who saw it happen, a conversation with myself and the school counselor, and then I will call their parent or guardian and discuss what's going on. If it happens a fourth time, we'll, again, make an incident report, we'll have a conversation between myself, the student, and the school counselor, and the parent and the guardian will meet in person with me. Additional consequences could go along with all of those things, such as in-school suspension, required community service, potential lunch detentions, or potential removal from RTCC depending on what the situation is. So that is level one. Level two, we're looking at things like drinking and possessing energy drinks in school, any kind of a safety violation, excessive swearing, skipping class, vandalizing, recording or photographing others without their consent, refusal to follow those phone expectations I talked about with the box, inappropriate use of the school property, or refusal to follow any of the directions by RTCC staff. If they do it the first time, they're going to have a conversation and process with the adult that saw them do it. They're going to then have a conversation with me, and then there will be other consequences that will be determined by me. So those consequences, there's a whole list, and that's basically many of the things that I just read, the ISS, the OSS, the community service, lunch detention, meeting with outside resources, police involvement if necessary, drug and alcohol counseling, depends on what the situation is. And it's progressive, so it gets more serious as the number of offenses go on. You get to your second offense and you have all of those same things, except that you're going to have a parent and guardian phone call and meeting as well as a meeting with me. If you do it a third time, there's going to be other consequences as determined by myself from my menu of consequences being appropriate to what the situation is. And the fourth offense, and it will go progressively through. So if it's a first-time offense, we're going to look at it a little differently than if it's a third-time offense. This is the third time we've had this conversation, we've documented it three times, we've talked to your parents, this is now what's going to happen. But it won't be a surprise to the student because they will see that it's moving in such a way that there will be a more severe consequence. And then finally, level three is on the last page. No, it's not. I'm backwards, it's not on the last page, sorry. Any bullying, harassment, a safety violation, vaping, use, distribution, possession of drugs, vapes, or alcohol. Verbal or written threats to the safety of the school, including the students and staff, or repeated interruption of the learning process, physical fighting, disrespect to adults, and repeated inappropriate behaviors of any kind, theft and plagiarism. So again, this is progressive with all of each consequence being laid out by the number of offenses and with the addition of the additional possible consequences. At the bottom, you see the asterix, if multiple actions occur at once, the consequences will be based upon the highest level infraction. Reports of bullying and/or harassment are subject to additional consequences, and the RTCC director reserves the right to amend the final consequence decisions.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes, please.
I would move vandalizing to level three. It's a very illegal thing to do when you're outside of school to vandalize-
Yeah.
...public property.
Hmm, good point.
I would say the level ones are right on point with the offenses. As you get to level three, I wouldn't give them so many chances.
Well, let me ask you a follow-up question.
Yep.
Vandalizing could be something very dramatic, like spray painting a wall, or it could be writing your name with pen on your desk. So that is why I put it in two, because it depends on-
I guess it's the destruction of private property, and you have to do different levels of vandalism. If you're ripping off bathroom stalls and making it unusable for other students, that is a lot different than LG, Hart, MT on a desk.
Exactly.
But it is a different series of vandalism. So maybe we just need to be-
Maybe minor and major.
Yeah. If you're vandalizing a student's car on the parking lot, it's a lot different as well, you know, like-
Absolutely.
-different things, different levels. So maybe, yeah, just make that thing. And the only reason I'm worried about the fourth offense, third offense, and even, like, and the second offense on level three is I'm thinking of the people that are getting hurt if they're spitting. Are they not going to want to come to school because this kid has another three chances to break out?
Oh, so, they wouldn't have another three chances. So let's say someone hit another student.
Okay.
They would have an incident report by the adult that saw it. They would have a conversation with me and the school counselor. The parent and guardian would be called, they would come in for a meeting, and then you see other consequences as determined by RTCC director, they would have five days out of school.
Okay.
That would be the other consequences, which is in the last column, the ISS, OSS, community service, all of those things. That's where I would tack those on.
Possibly on first offense, it should say, which may include removal from the program.
Yeah.
Like expulsion could happen on the first offense if it's serious enough.
Right, if it's a serious enough. Okay, so that is, that's other consequences and then removal from RTCC. You want me to actually write it there?
If they knew that on the very first offense that was a possibility, it takes away a misconception that you'd, you'd have to do it four times to be removed.
Okay. Such as removal. Got it.
And I would even say anything with drugs, alcohol, fighting, vaping, safety violations, I wouldn't hesitate to get the police involved just as a enforcement.
Neither would I.
And I would say that this is what's going to happen in the real world if you do these things, so I'm not saying they have to be arrested, but just getting them involved and explaining to the people, like, this is not okay, like, and this is why, and, and really, almost strike fear, but educate these kids that are, that are doing that.
So I want to be cognizant of the time.
Yeah.
Um, I also want to point out that this has been a very good process. And this is what an advisory team is supposed to look like in the sort of discussions that they should be having.
Very helpful.
Yep.
Thank you.
And so, you know, that's hopefully going to become more and more the norm. This team had always existed, but across the district, you know, it was one of the focuses last year for getting the advisory councils at every school so that they can have these discussions as they're touching on these thorny topics that are really important.
Yeah.
So, really good job.
I've made all, all the notes that you have suggested to me, and I will make those corrections, and I really appreciate you being here and just listening. If you have any concerns that you want to voice to me, please feel free to email.
I'll just throw in two cents real quick. I'd get rid of fourth offense on all three levels.
I agree.
Um, and I don't notice cheating anywhere in level three.
It, it is.
I see plagiarism.
It's plagiarism.
Is-
Would cover.
Would cover everything.
Yeah, because you would be plagiarizing someone else's answers.
You could just do, like, a dash, cheating, just for, to make it clear, if you know what I mean.
Yep.
Academic dishonesty.
But I would agree with Sam, and I would remove fourth offense across the board on all of them.
I back that up.
Yeah.
Green stripes.
Okay.
Nice.
Thank you very, very much.
Good job.
I will make those edits. Thank you.
I think this is all tough.
Yeah.
Yeah. On level two, in additional consequences, it doesn't list any additional consequences. It's a, it's a typo.
It is a typo.
So we should still do consent agenda for the last minutes and then close out.
All right. So in your packet, we had the May tenth minutes. Are there any corrections or edits? Hearing none, I'll take a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
Move it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, the minutes are approved as presented, and there's no further business. We will close and look forward to the next meeting. Thank you so much.
Nice to meet you.
You too. Thank you. Thank you.